Good evening. It's time to bring the Macomb Township Planning Commission meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, November 5. Please stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice our
Roll call.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Shudo.
Here.
Mr. Brovanzano.
Here.
Mr. Oliver.
Here.
Mr. Tuckfield is present. Mr. Hardy is absent and excused this evening. Mr. Bentley.
Here.
Mr. Kuzminsky.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, all members are present save Member Hardy, who is absent and excused this evening.
Mr. Chairman, the Lycan make a motion to exclude Member Hardy from all roll call votes.
Motion by Mr. Shudo to exclude Mr. Hardy from all votes.
Support.
Support by Mr.?
I did, yeah.
Support for Mr. Tuckfield, on favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Approval of the minutes. Approval of the previous meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no deletions, additions, or corrections, then make a motion to accept the meeting minutes as read.
Motion by Mr. Shudo, supported by Mr.? Who supported that?
Brovanzano.
Brovanzano, on favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further comments or discussions, the Lycan make a motion to approve tonight's agenda as presented.
Motion by Mr. Tuckfield to second the agenda. Seconded by? Who seconded it?
Mr. Brovanzano.
Keep that hand up so I know.
I had it like this.
Seconded by Mr. Brovanzano.
Okay.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Item 6, new business public hearing. This is a rezoning request, general commercial C2 to residential multiple family high density R2H, permanent parcel 0833400019, located on the northwest corner of Hall Road and Heidrick Road, Section 33, Salmar Royal Village LLC petitioner. This was postponed from the October 15 meeting. Mr. Maher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The master plan for this particular site calls for the property to be commercial. The applicants are asking for residential high density at this point in time. That would allow for structures up to 10 stories in height. The master plan does have areas where it looks for more intense development. Those are typically west of Romeo Plank and east of Hayes, north of Hall Road. Because this doesn't meet the character of the area, isn't consistent with surrounding zonings, and isn't consistent with the surrounding land uses, we're recommending denial of the rezoning. I know this is the public hearing tonight, so we'll take public comments, and you can decide as a commission if you're ready to make a decision after such time.
Thank you. Petitioner.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Tom Callis. My address is 31350 Telegraph Road, Suite 201, Bingham Farms, Michigan. I'm here this evening representing the petitioner, Salmar Royal Village LLC. As Mr. Maher indicated, today is a date and time set for the public hearing. We did appear before this commission last month and made a presentation for what was scheduled as a public hearing, but was defective in notice, and so we're here again this evening. Statements were made at that time. Presentation was made. I'll mimic that in large part tonight. I'd like to also incorporate that presentation into tonight's record. As Mr. Maher indicated, the property is currently zoned commercial. It's on Hall Road, Heidenreich and Hall Road. My client is seeking to rezone it to R2H residential multiple high density. The purpose is to construct apartments for elderly housing under your zoning ordinance, R2H, which it's allowed as a special land use. We feel that the proposed zoning is more suitable for the area. It's more of a transitional zoning because you have residential multiple low density to the north. You also have office use and zoning to the north, and you have the commercial zoning to the west. On the Clinton Township side, which is south of Hall Road, on the south side you have industrial and retail uses, and on the west side you have restaurants and offices. Hall Road has a ton of commercial space, as you all know, both on the north and south side. Many businesses come and go on Hall Road. Nationals come, they put up a restaurant, or some type of retail commercial use. Within a year, two years, they're closed down, okay? You see it all over the place. With respect to what we're proposing, it's a use that's in demand. It's economically feasible, and it's an ideal location for it because it's off Hall Road. I know at the last meeting, there were some residents who appeared and had expressed some concerns about potentially if the property were to be rezoned to R2H, how high the buildings would be built, because zoning ordinance does allow for buildings from four to 10 stories in height. I can tell the Planning Commission tonight, in fact, under Michigan's conditional zoning statute, my client will offer and will agree that in the event the property is rezoned to the proposed R2H, that they will limit the height of any buildings on that property to four stories. No higher than four stories. And that's binding under Michigan statute. He took into concern, or took into consideration the concerns of the residents, and he's willing to make that condition here this evening. Now, as far as the, you know, there were some concerns relative to traffic. Again, this is for elderly housing, so it's not a situation where you're going to have a bunch of families living there, you know, with two, three, four cars per family, everyone trying to get out of the location, or subdivision, or development, all at the same time to go to work, all coming home at the same time from work. You know, for the most part, the residents in this development will be people who are either semi-retired, retired, you know, and dictate their own hours. You know, they can choose to leave, you know, after rush hour dies down, travel to and from, you know, their apartment at various times of the day, avoiding rush hour and peak rush hour periods. So, the traffic will not be as intense as many may believe because of the demographic of the population that'll be located there and who my client is marketing the, well, will be marketing the project to. You know, as you know, the site has a drain. It's a difficult parcel to develop. We have looked at some preliminary sketches and layouts. We're pretty confident that any buildings that are constructed will be not in the back, but more towards Hall Road. So that'll take care of some concerns that some of the residents had to the north as to what they're going to be looking at. So we have a building, or buildings, that'll be four stories or less, and they'll be as far away from the residential, you know, as possible, mostly along Hall Road. So, you know, it's going, there's a demand for it. Apartments up and down Hall Road, both on the Macomb Township side and the Clinton Township side, are at capacity. There is a need for this type of use. There's a need in the township for this type of use, and where better to put it than on Hall Road, as far away from most of your residential that's in the northern part of your township, and north of Hall Road. So, with that being said, we would kindly request, you know, we're here, my client's here, we can answer any questions you may have, any concerns, but we would request that the Planning Commission make a recommendation to rezone from its current C2's commercial zoning to an R2H residential multiple high density. Thank you.
Okay. Questions from the commissioners? Anything? I got a question, Mr. Maher.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Callis indicated that they would agree to a four-story. Now, in the event that that was agreed upon, and then it got sold, how would that pass down?
You know, it's a condition he's offering. He'd have to work with Tom to come up with legal language, you know, prior to it being approved from the board, but it would be binding on any party that ends up developing the property.
Okay. This question I need to know. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, at this point in time, I'll bring it to the public. There is going to be a four-minute speaking allotment, and we will take everyone's comments, and we're not going to answer questions right at the point. Sir, name and address.
My name's Tom Champion. I live at 20806 Sleepy Hollow, which is to the east of the proposed development by him, right behind Home Depot, that Hall of Heidenreich. I object to the idea of putting up a multi-density building, partly because of traffic, but traffic, according to the people I've talked to, doesn't win in court, so that's not a big argument. But there is a lot of difficulty with school buses going up and down Heidenreich, given the number of schools that are on there, and they use that Heidenreich-Hall Road situation a lot. I'm one of those elderly people that he spoke about, since I'm over 80, and there's two cars in my neighborhood, and if I look in my household, and if I look up and down the street, two, three cars continually, and that is a condo development, one you would expect there'd be more retirees than active people. So, I do think that brings a bit of a problem. Secondly, if you, or thirdly, if you look at Hall Road, and the number of driveways and entrances in that area between the commercial that he mentioned, the restaurant that he mentioned, if we go to the east side, we've got the gas station, another commercial development, and more driveways that enter Hall Road. And that causes a lot of problems sometimes on Hall Road with the traffic pulling in and out, and that light at Heidenreich. So, those are my objections. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Anne Courtney, 45383 Diamond Pond Drive. Even with the proposal of four stories, we do not want that. It would better serve us as far as aesthetics, architecture, traffic, all of that, that we keep it more in line with what's already there. We've got medical buildings, we've got banks, we've got office buildings, they're all one story, they all fit in with the neighborhood. So we are asking that you please do not approve of this. Thank you.
Peggy Gaynor, 20649 Hillsborough in Macomb. I am also in the complex just north of this proposal. I agree with the other residents. Four stories is just out of the picture. Everything else, we have such a beautiful area that we live in, four stories would almost be an eyesore for us. You say that the elderly doesn't have vehicles. Yes, in our complex, everybody has almost two vehicles. That's not gonna take away from it using the excuse that elderly people don't have vehicles, 'cause yes, we all do. I don't know if this is a proposed low-income senior housing. We do have lots of schools going right down Heidrick, a multitude of schools, so the buses are already there. There's already a lot of traffic. In going in the surrounding area, in approximately two miles of Hall Road in this location, there are a total of 3,902 apartments. Besides that, there is a trailer park that has another 2,562 homes. That's almost 6,500 vehicles. Well, double that if everybody had two, in that area, in less than three miles, and now we want to add more. There's already enough traffic there. I beg of you to, please, do not approve this, unless they can come back with a single-story and something more in line with what we have in the area. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
You know, just for clarification, I know the applicant has indicated that they desire to do a senior facility there, or something to accommodate senior living. It's not a condition at this point in time of the rezoning, so if rezoned to the R2H designation, they're not limited to the seniors. So I just wanted to make that clear for everyone, and, you know, unless that's offered as a condition, it is open to any type of living units, apartments, that meet the standards of the R2H.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Greg Billington, 20524 Columbia. Just a couple of notes. The area requested rezoned from commercial to C2 to R2 residential multifamily high density apartment-type drawing does not fit, as was mentioned, I believe, by the engineer in the previous meeting and tonight. The area along Garfield, between Hall Road and 21, is set up for this. Property is available. I'm not saying the petitioner needs to go buy it, but there's plenty of room there to build more that would accommodate that style housing. The area adjacent to the rezoning request, there are no multifamily high-density developments. Not sure the rhetoric that was spoken of in previous meetings, but there is none in my eyesight, north, west, or east, within a mile. South, yes, in Clinton Township. Last time I read, this is Macomb. The rezoning request should be approved, should it be approved, will lead to an increase in traffic, as everybody said, and change the character of the area, and most likely cause a decrease in property value. Last point, not for this meeting, but however, it should be noted that the area requested rezoned should be looked at for watershed requirements. Right now, it is a watershed area. Added water flow to that pond that's back there would have to be a shared expense. Also, there is considerable wildlife that would be impacted by this.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Derry Carlson, 45401 Delmar Drive. I mean, I wasn't even thinking about those sorts of things, and when it was originally presented as a ten-story, my immediate thought went to, and I'm still thinking about it, is that, do you have fire equipment in Macomb Township that would take care of a four? Or, you know, I know, I know there's a few buildings that are four stories, but do you have one that's close enough that would be able to take care of a fire in a four-story apartment complex that far away from your fire stations? And I think the answer is no. By the time that they would get there, you'd have sparks flying all over, and we would be in danger. Thank you.
Just for the record, we've got a great fire department. Yes, okay. Thank you. Okay.
Hi, my name is John Stratche. I'm at 20498 Columbia Drive. I live on the pond, right across from the proposed discussion tonight of the property. I, a couple of things that I want to do. First of all, some things have already been mentioned, so I want to just raise my voice with them. All the commercial property along M59 is all pretty much single-story, low commercial dwelling structures, and I'm really concerned about the traffic flow. There may not be a lot of cars there. I'm just concerned about the aesthetic value. It is a wetland with the pond. There are a considerable number of wildlife animals that live and go back and forth, flying in and out of that area, and we'd like to kind of keep that the same way. There is a partial greenbelt that would be there, but a four-story building would certainly rise above all that. So from an aesthetic value proposal, it would be an eyesore. Secondly, the traffic flow in the corner of Heidenreich and 59 is terrible. All, pretty much all the north and south lane roads that are single or two-lane are just heavily flowed during rush hour, in the morning for about an hour and a half to two hours, and backward in the evening time. So I just want to raise my voice with a lot of the concerns, the water flow, the water table, the retention pond, all those things, and I think we should turn down this. Thank you.
Tony Odd, 20467 Columbia Drive, Macomb. Hold on, sir. Could you get that last name? Odd. It's an odd name. Sounds like it.
Hi, Mr. Odd, could you make sure you spell it off for me? My apologies. I have to write it down. If I get it wrong, it's my issue, so.
Okay. A-U-E-D. You're right.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
One of the persons that spoke earlier mentioned the fact that there are four schools, three of them on Heidenreich, one of them right off of Heidenreich, a high school. You've got multiple vehicles interacting with a ton of school buses. You have a lot of traffic that at times, in Windermere 1 and Windermere 3, you cannot pull out and make a left-hand turn any time in the morning, or any time near school time, and in the evening, when people are coming home from work. This would only exacerbate the problem. It would be traffic problems. It would be problems with schoolchildren that both walk from the corner to their condo or their home, as well as elderly that are walking down the street, crossing over to the stores and the restaurants. It would just be an added nightmare. Thank you. Thank you. Nobody else on this item? Being done, bring it back to the board. Comments? Motions?
Mr. Chairman, did you want me to summarize any of the points we had tonight, or you want to leave those? I think they're mostly the same ones we heard last time.
They're basically the same points, traffic, traffic, and traffic. It seems like the biggest issue here, and that's what most of the residents talked about. Mr. Maher, do you got anything to add to that?
No, you know, I think a lot of the residents just brought up the character of the area not being that of a four-story structure, so I, you know, not to say I'm agreeing or pushing that issue, but that was a statement made over continuously.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, there was also one other question that was brought up that I just wanted to make sure I understood the process on. Mr. Maher and Mr. Van Tiflin might be able to help me out with this. When a building goes through the approval process on a vertical height basis, does the fire department have to approve certain heights based on our apparatus? They're part of that process, correct?
Yes, they are, and they do a review that would be based on the International Fire Code, and as well, they have the liberty to health safety, general health safety standards when they review it, so if they feel for any reason they are not able to defend a fire properly, it can certainly be a contributor to the height of the building if that were necessary.
Very good. And then with regards, there was some concern about water. This is as with all of our other parcels, the applicant, if they developed it, would be responsible to pass engineering and county water retention detention restrictions.
That is correct. They would have to go through the full process. There's a county drain that runs through this property. The county stormwater standards would require a detention basin on their, on their site going into the county drain, so that would all be done after the site plan was approved.
And that's the case regardless of if this rezoning were to go through, or if any other development were to happen on this parcel?
The same requirement would apply, no matter what happens on this property.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And also, follow up to that, roads would be treated the same way? Entrances and traffic would be all treated the same way?
It would be, you would have to meet the county as well as the state standards. Yes.
Okay. Mr. Van Tiflin, that drain that they talk about in the pond, when I viewed that property, I didn't really see much of a pond there.
I think there's a pond within the condominium development that the stormwater drains into that's on the other side of the drain, for the most part where this property, the drain kind of bends around and goes to the center of this property. They will have to contend with that when they develop it, so they'll have to provide detention either on either side of the drain, if they leave it there, or if they move the drain, then on probably the Heidenreich side of it. But it would be their own detention basin. It wouldn't be part of the condominium.
So, going forward, whoever develops that property, nobody's going to share one pond or detention basin. They will be separate detention basins.
In order for them to try and get into their pond, they would have to negotiate that with the condominium association. Also, that pond was sized for that particular development. If more water's going into it, you'd have to increase the size of it to store that additional water, so all of that would have to be accounted for, but we're not at that point. We have no idea what they're getting themselves into.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners have any other questions?
One other question, follow up to Mr. Maher's statement that the R2H is not limited, or I should say, yeah, it is not limited just to senior, that there could be other uses as well. My question would be if, if it's, if that's something that's in the same category as the limit of, limit to four stories, if they can also limit by contract for any future owner just to four stories? And to, and to senior living?
The applicant has to write, the, I'm sorry, let me rephrase. The applicant has the right to provide a condition that it would be for, you know, just senior development, whether that be assisted, or independent, or memory care, or whatever the case may be. At this point in time, that hasn't been a condition offered. If they do offer that, and that were part of your recommendation, again, they would have to work with Mr. Assorti to put that into a legal document that would go in front of the board for formal approval. Did I answer?
Yes, you did.
Okay.
And my follow-up question would be to our attorney, is that a possible restriction that could be formulated and hold up?
Is it possible? Yes, it's possible.
Okay. I think one of the concerns here is that we can't provide restrictions.
Right.
So, it's, it's.
Tonight it's zoning. Nothing to do with it. Tonight it's zoning.
Well, you know, again, Mr. Callis has offered one condition tonight, and he can offer additional conditions, but... he can offer additional conditions, but the planning commission and the township cannot demand those conditions. So, you know, if he were to offer that, certainly it could be included as part of your motion, but at this point, it has not been included.
Thank you. That's what I needed to know.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no more further deliberations, I would like to deny the request for the, from C2 to R2H for partial number 0833400019. There's a motion by Mr. Kuzminski to deny the request.
I'll second that.
Support by Mr. Shudo.
Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, I, I, I think, you know, if you're, if you're going to deny, make a recommendation, because again, we're making a recommendation to the township board at this point in time, we should include some of the rationale or reasons for that denial, so that the township board has a clear understanding as to why we're recommending denial, whether that be that it's incompatible with the master plan, or incompatible with the characteristics of the area. You know, that, that type of stuff.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Pat, can I use your reasons as far as they're currently rezoned, or should I just use the specifics of what you said? As far as the aesthetics there, and also the, you know, what the property should be, and leave it at as it is?
Yeah, I mean, if that, if that's your belief, and that's, you know, why you think it should be denied, then, yeah, I think you should use those reasons.
Okay, and as far as with the master plan also, to leave it as, leave it as commercial. That'd be added to my motion. Okay. With that added to the motion, we still have a second?
We do, and I'd like a roll call vote also.
Okay.
That was what I was going to ask. All right, Mr. Chairman. Call the motion. Mr. Kuzminski?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Provenzano?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. Mr. Hart, Mr. Bentley?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, that motion passed six to nothing.
The motions tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I'd also would like to just add one other item onto that as far as my reasoning for it, in that as part of the master plan process, there was a lot of extensive looking that both the board of trustees and the planning commission did at that time on commercial usage, specifically as with, as regards to commercial usage. I think that there was a lot of time spent on how much was appropriate, and I think that it's good to stick with that plan as the board, boards and consultants went with.
Thank you. Okay. If the residents want to leave, they can leave. I'll take a two-minute break. Okay, this time, we're going to restart the meeting. All righty, we are on 6B, extension of time. Final preliminary plant, plat, Harmony Acres subdivision 6. Permanent parcel 0816200017. Located on the south side of 24 Mile Road, one mile and a quarter east of Romeo Plank, section 16. Joe Van Havenbeck petitioner. Mr. Maher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This subdivision has been around probably as longer than I have. The bottom line is, is we do have all the improvements in right now. We don't have any new ordinance provisions which would have an influence or impact the design of the lots, or the shape of the subdivision of the lots. We've had no objections from any of the departments with regard, with regard to the extension, so at this point in time, we just don't see a point of not making another extension, although I do understand it has been quite a while since this has been approved.
Okay. The petitioner in the audience, or their representation? Being done? Bring it to commissioners, questions?
Mr. Maher, if you could, I know it has been around for a while. Do you know which extension, how many years this has been?
Well, you know, I think Phase 4, you know, and it indicates in the letter, I believe it's Phase 4 was approved in 2011, so it's been about eight years since, you know, the approval came through for that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Chairman, this is more of a comment than a question. I don't have a problem approving this tonight, per se. We've had a long history of doing this.
Yes.
But as I think multiple commissioners have talked about before, I feel like we need some sort of better policy in the future to not be doing the same thing over and over again, and just passing it through, so. I have no problem if there's no other comments making the motion to approve it, but hopefully we can address this.
I got to take this to public.
Very good.
Any other questions? Okay, this time I'll bring it to the public. Anyone want to speak on this item? Being done? Bring it back to the board for comments and/or motions. Mr. Tuckfield?
Chairman, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve the extension of time for the final preliminary plat of Harmony Acres subdivision 4, permanent parcel 0816200017, pursuant to the recommendations of the township staff, and also that this has been our, our custom for quite some time, and I'd like to make that to extend it for a period of one year.
Support. Motion by Mr. Tuckfield for a one-year extension, supported by Mr. Kuzminski. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. 6C, extension of time, final preliminary plat, Wexford Meadows subdivision. Permanent parcel 0827100034. Located just east of Hydrick Road, quarter mile south of 22 Mile Road, section 27. Joseph Van Havenbeck petitioner. Mr. Maher.
Mr. Chairman, my apologies if I can interrupt. One of the other commissioners pointed out to me I may have read off the incorrect permanent parcel number. I'd just like to let the record show that the last one ended with 014, according to our paperwork, and I said 017. So just want to follow up with that.
That is the one we just did.
It says that on the agenda, but on the paperwork, it says 014. All of the stuff in here, so.
All right, for the record, 6B was 0816200017, correct?
Which is what I read out, but our paperwork says 014. I guess I would just pass it to the, to the planning department and the engineering department. It's this one, Harmony Acres subdivision 4. If you guys can verify the correct parcel number. If I have to come back and correct it at a future meeting, I'd be happy doing it. My apologies, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make sure we had that corrected before.
That's fine. We are now 0827100034.
Correct?
Okay.
I believe so.
All right. Mr. Maher. You're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I lost my rhythm. The, uh, Mr. Chairman, now this is rough, if I remember correctly, this is about a 16-lot subdivision that is basically a cul-de-sac in an existing subdivision. The, um, again, the improvements are in on this. It's much like the previous request, and you know, again, we, we don't have any provisions that would impact the lot sizes, or the shape or size of, or circulation in this particular development. All the department heads have responded that they have no objections to the request, so we are recommending approval, even though this has been a lengthy situation that we're dealing with.
So this is the same situation as Harmony Acres?
It is, you know, and no longer this goes on, you know, obviously there, there could be changes to the land division ordinance that could impact this, and, you know, hopefully that doesn't occur for the applicant's sake, but if it does, it certainly could have a negative impact on the value of his property, so.
Sure.
Hopefully, they're going to act on it fairly soon.
Okay. Commissioners have any questions on this?
Mr. Chairman, as, as being one of the newer commissioners, I guess what I would ask is, what are the reasons for the extension of the request? If I may ask?
Yeah, you know, the applicant or his representative, I don't recall who it was, was in last year during the process of asking for the last extension, and it was indicated at that point in time that there was some, some issues with regard to the family that had to be ironed out, and I'm not sure if that was a trust issue. Let me rephrase that. It sounds like no one trusts each other, but an actual family trust. So, you know, I, I think they were trying to get that stuff sorted out at the time, and I don't know if that's still going on or not.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, this time I'll bring it to the public. Anyone in the public have anything on this item? Being done, bring back to the board for comments, motions?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further discussion, I would request the one-year extension for property or pin number 0827100034.
Motion by Mr. Kuzminski for a one-year extension. Support?
I support.
You support it? Supported by Mr. Bentley. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion passes. Okay, now we go to old business. Item 7. Rezoning request, general commercial C2 to residential multiple-family medium-density R2. Permanent parcel 0807300016, located on the northeast corner of 24 Mile Road and Hayes Road, section 7, Salmar Center LLC petitioner. This also was postponed from the October 15th meeting. Mr. Maher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, again, in, in this particular case, the property is Zone C2 right now. The master plan calls for a commercial development on this property. I think Mr. Tuckfield rightly pointed out, you know, when this master plan was put together, you went through a substantial study on general, in terms of commercial needs, and you know, the relationship with commercial next to residential isn't always the greatest. The relationship of multiple-family next to single-family is an inherent conflict as well, so we get down to a point where we have to look at what are the adjacent uses? How does everything gel together? And I think the master plan recommended and represented a relationship between commercial and single-family residential in this particular area as being the suitable fit. So we, again, would recommend denial based on the master plan.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. Tom Callis, address 31350, Telegraph Road, Suite 201, Bingham Farms, Michigan. I'm here this evening representing the petitioner, Salmar Center LLC. The public hearing took place in this matter. Our presentation was made at the time. Tonight is the date and time set for the planning commission's recommendation. My client and I are both here. In the event you have any questions or concerns, we're here to address them.
Thank you. Commissioners have anything on this item?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if, if I could.
Yeah.
You know, the, the only one thing that, you know, could be offered in, in this situation is, you know, the, the township has three multifamily designations, and the applicants decided not to go with, you know, the one step up from the R1, which might have been that R2L district, which might have given a little bit less density and more compatibility with the single-family. And, you know, I just note that for the commission's consideration.
But tonight they're still asking for the.
They are asking for the R2.
We're asking for the R2 residential multiple medium-density. Again, in this district, the buildings are limited to two stories, as they are under the R2L. It just gives you a little bit more flexibility in developing the site and, and, and density, which we feel is necessary for this specific site, so the R2 is still the requested zoning district.
Okay. All right. Again, commissioners, any questions on that after Mr. Maher made that comment?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, only one question. Patrick, the medium-density, what's that in units per acre?
You know, I headed my previous reviews. Let me just take a quick look. I
I should know it.
Don't have that rating.
Six.
To me, but.
I think it went to six. I'm not sure. We're going to wait for Mr. Maher.
Basically, what, what that offers is it requires 5,000 square feet for each dwelling unit. So if we put that into 43,550, we should end up with about eight units per acre, roughly.
Eight, okay.
Little bit over that.
Very good.
If you want, I can calculate it, but.
Roughly, I know we haven't. Very often, Mr. Chairman, I'd just make a comment before we, before we get to a vote, just, just my thoughts that I, I would generally have a similar consideration on this. It's not as much the traffic that is my concern here, but that there was a lot of work spent in determining the proper amount and location for commercial, and I don't see a significant reason to change that here.
Okay. Do note it. Okay, if there's nothing.
I just have one question. So the petitioner, why do you feel you can't develop this commercial?
It's, it's, well, it's vacant for a reason. There's a, McComb Township is saturated with commercial uses. There's no demand for it. Aside from the economic feasibility and the demand issue, it's just not proper zoning. You don't put C2 abutting, single-family residential. It's not proper zoning. It, it's, it's, you know, it violates all planning principles. We're proposing more of a transitional use and more of a compatible use for that area.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Okay, this time I'll bring it to the public. Does anyone in the public want to speak on this item?
This is not a public hearing, though, correct?
We.
Mr. Chairman, we did close the public hearing.
Did we close it?
We did close it.
On this one. Okay, I'm sorry, ma'am. This is my mistake. This is not, we already had the public portion. There's no public on this. Sorry. We, 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 we had, we had a public portion on that. Okay. Bring back the board for, well, it's at the board. Comments, motions?
Mr. Chairman, then a, a follow-up question, because we have a, a planner and director here, Mr. Maher. As it relates to the comment that a C2 is, is, is not proper planning, it is in our master plan, and, and just wanted your input on its, its location adjacent to the R1s and such.
You know, certainly, the, the ideal situation is, you know, you would like to avoid areas where you have commercial directly next to single-family. You'd like to avoid areas where you have industrial next to single-family. Unfortunately, those, those occasions do exist. The ordinance does provide for buffering which can take place between those types of uses. It also provides for buffering between multifamily and single-family. But it comes down to, you know, and I've been involved in, you know, several instances where the public was much more against having a higher-density multifamily next to them than they were having the commercial next to them, just due to in-and-out activity, nighttime noise, so there's different characteristics to both that contribute to the conflicts. The ordinance does provide for buffering. That's the best we can do.
Thank you.
Okay. Comments, motions?
Chairman, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to recommend denial of this request to the township board of trustees. This denial would be because of it not matching with our master plan, with the existing use being consistent with other areas of our master plan, and also the backlog and history done by various commissions and boards as to. boards as to the proper amount of commercial in the township. This would be for permanent parcel 0807300016, Salmar petitioner.
Motion by Mr. Tuckfield.
I'll support that.
Denial, supported by Mr. Shudo.
Roll call vote again.
Roll call vote.
The motion, I vote aye, Mr. Shudo.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzminsky?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Provenzano?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion passes six to nothing.
Thank you. The motion is denied. Mr. Callis, thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight, public comments. None agenda items. Anyone in the public have anything they want to speak on tonight? Okay. Being none, bring it back. Commissioners comments? Nothing?
Sounds surprised.
I am surprised. I, I do have one comment. Mr. Maher?
Yes, sir.
We probably really, really need to find a direction for these extensions. Either, either, whatever we do, but they're continually coming. We need to maybe have a, a format for them, maybe the first year-loud, couple of years, and then after that, it's gonna be, because I see when an extension comes in, the community is spending money on them. Your office, they go to other offices. So, there, there is an impact in, inside of our own community here. The department heads got to look at them. So, we really need to maybe decide how we want to treat these going forward. If we could put something together, I'd love to hear it.
Yeah, I, I mean, there's, there's several things you can do, Mr. Chairman. I, I, you know, many communities, you, you get your approval, and they limit you to one extension. After that, you're back in for a new application. That's certainly an aggressive way to, to do it. You know, I, I, I think that we, we did have a large amount of developments that were coming back in for extensions largely, largely due to the recession and the amount of development you had prior to the recession, and the amount of development that picked up after the recession. And Macomb Township was probably hit harder with that than many of the surrounding communities. You know, you, you can go back and forth. We, we've had a couple of problems because of the extensions, and, you know, individual lots that have posed problems because we had larger easements than what we expected because of our engineer. I'm just kidding around. But, you know, we, we have had some, some issues that have cropped up, and, and, yeah, had we taken a second look at it, you know, maybe we would have caught it, but they would still meet the ordinance requirement when you got right down to the brass tacks. So, I, I don't know that there's overall a solution. We can certainly penalize the applicant and say, you know, sorry, you don't, after one extension, you're done. I'm not sure how that serves the community. Now, you know, perhaps the other approach would be to take a look at the ordinances themselves, and, you know, as you go through those ordinances, to reassess how you're doing some of this stuff. And I think that's probably a better approach, you know, from the long term. But I, I just don't, being, you know, I represented 34 different municipalities over the last, you know, 30 years, and many of them have had a very strict policy. You're in, you got your one year or two years for a final preliminary plat, and after that, you have one extension. But when that one extension is done, who are you serving by saying the one extension's up, you're now denied, you gotta come back and pay another $1,900 and?
For the safe plan reviews, that would it be?
Whatever the cost is.
The, the whole.
I threw the number out. I'm not even sure what the number is anymore. I think it's 1890 or, okay, I'm not even sure anymore. But right around 2,000. We'll use that as a, as a round number. So, I, I guess what I would recommend, you know, we got RFPs out right now for a planning consultant for the community, and, you know, perhaps work with them on a policy that, you know, will work both for you as a community and for the development community. But, you know, I, I would recommend that you not look at it as some type of a punitive argument, because you're not really serving the community or the, you know, or the developer in that instance. So.
Okay.
If there's a rational reason to say, hey, you know, we don't want it anymore, all the better. But in most cases, if it still meets the ordinance, all you're doing is costing time and money to bring the exact same development back to the table, so.
That kind of answers it.
Something, something to consider.
Okay. I appreciate that.
And, and I think there's a lot of room to improve the ordinances over time, so, you know, as you start to look at that, and, and that goes for every community, so it's not, and it's not an insult to the ordinances here in Macomb, but.
We understand.
You know, we're reinvestigating ordinances in Washington Township as well right now, trying to look at a little bit better way of adapting the building footprint and recrea, outdoor recreation footprint, and perhaps having two different setbacks for those, so that we're not constantly fighting with easements and lack of space on these lots, and it's really become a challenge.
Yep. We've seen few of them too.
We sure have.
Number 10. Board of Lia, the Macomb Township Board of Trustees liaison update.
Nothing happened, uh, there wasn't any planning that came up to the board at the time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kuzminsky.
You're welcome.
The ZBA liaison update.
Same for me. We did not have a meeting in the month of November, or we do not have a meeting in the month of November, and I have nothing to pass on.
All right. Planning department items. Mr. Maher, anything?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I've consulted with my partner over here, and we have nothing to report tonight.
Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Shudo. Support, support by Mr. Tuckfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.